Good evening. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Selectman Serena, would you please leave us? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our indiscernible liberty and justice for all.
I would first like to say good evening to my fellow board members.
Good evening.
And to Janice Gervais. I want to mention that tonight's meeting is strictly on the seven hearings that have to do with a retail marijuana dispensary in Saugus. Selectman Chicalini is not here tonight because he had a conflict. He has not participated in any of these retail marijuana hearings. It's important to mention that the Board of Selectmen are responsible for granting an S-2 or a special permit. And we are basing this on the best location based on traffic flow, neighborhood impact, access and egress, proximity to schools, circulation flows, parking and queuing as required by the Saugus zoning bylaws. Once we vote on a location, it's up to our town manager to grant the host community agreement. That is his job to do that once we decide on what location. And it has to be unanimous. For a special permit or an S-2 permit, you need four votes. And since we are missing a member, all four of us unanimously have to vote on one or two or more locations this evening, if that's what the Board would like to do. Before we open it up to the first applicant, is there anybody on the Board that would like to say a few words?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you. I just would like the public to know that I filed three disclosures today on three different locations. The first one for Bostica. I have a personal relationship with the principal owner, Raymond Fellidi. Ray has done business for me in the past, and we've been friends for over 30 years. I have another conflict, not a conflict. I filed a disclosure on 173 Main Street, and that building is owned by Mehdi Merdasari. Mehdi and I have been friends for quite some time. I've purchased cars from him, so I filed the disclosure on that. And the third one is on Triple M. They are potentially leasing a building from Sal Palumbo. Sal Palumbo is a friend of mine. I was employed by him in 2016, and we are friends today. So I filed the disclosure on those three locations. Above and beyond that, I have a personal friendship with Pat Russellillo, who is the Director of Security for Northeast Can. So, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Would anybody else like to say a few words?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena.
I'd just like to go through some things and let people know how I feel regarding the marijuana issue. I haven't had the opportunity yet to do that, but we're going to take a vote tonight. I'd like to get that right out of the way so people know where I'm coming from. In 2016, we had a statewide ballot question allowing communities to sell recreational mari-
You can't hear him. Talking to the mic.
I'd just like to go over some of the thoughts that I had, and I hadn't had a chance to explain, so people understand where I'm coming from and how I'm going to vote tonight. In 2016, there was a statewide ballot question regarding the sale of recreational marijuana for all the communities statewide. So I just oppose that, 53% to 47% by 1,000 votes. So I just keep that in mind. There are surrounding communities. I looked at all the communities from Chelsea all the way up Route 195 to the New Hampshire border, and I'd just like to give you a breakdown of who adopted marijuana, the sale of recreational marijuana, and the numbers involved here. Surrounding communities who have not adopted the sale of marijuana: Bauxford, Danvis, Everett, Groveland, Hamilton, Ipswich, Lynnfield, Manchester Byers Sea, Marblehead, Middleton, Peabody, Revere, Rockport, Stonem, Tarpsville, Wakefield, Wenham, West Newbury, and Winthrop. There are six communities that have adopted it but are not reporting any revenue on their Department of Revenue website as any communities receiving taxes. Essex, they adopted it in 2019. Nahat, 2022. Newbury, 2018. Newbury Port, 2019. Marlin did adopt it in 2018, but has never shown any revenue recently up to these numbers that I'm going to read out, and I have copies for the press so you don't have to juggle it down. These numbers that, and this information I'm giving out tonight is from the Department of Revenue website, and it's as of today, 12/12/23. Marlin did adopt it in 2018, but they have not shown any revenue yet. And I know they just recently opened a retail establishment at Cappy's liquor. Beverly just adopted it in 2023. I don't know for what, medical or recreational, but-
Excuse me, sir. It's recreational.
But the particular community is only, there's three reasons why the community might be only selling medical marijuana, not recreational. In medical marijuana, you do not pay any sales taxes to the towns. And it's also possible that the community has not licensed any establishment for recreational yet. Or the last reason why is from the Department of Revenue. If there's only one establishment that exists in a community, they cannot release the sales tax that that community gets from that one establishment because you could figure out what they make for an income, yearly income, and it's against business privacy laws. So out of the 35 communities that I mentioned, 10 are reporting revenue from the sale of recreational marijuana. Amesbury, $414,000. Chelsea, $306,000. I'm rounding these off. Georgetown, $144,000. Gloucester, $304,000. Lynn, $326,000. Melrose, $300,000. Raleigh, $218,000. Salem is the only community that's bringing in a real significant amount of revenue. It's $1.2 million, and it's mostly likely because of a tourist community. And Danvis and Beverly up to that point has not sold any recreational marijuana. Salisbury, $334,000. Swampsket, $80,000. So out of the 10 communities that report in revenue for 2023, I don't have the numbers yet for all of them in 20, I mean, 2022. I don't have all the numbers for 2023. Five of them reported approximately $300,000 a year that the towns are getting for revenue. Three of them were under $300,000. Two were above the $300,000. Amesbury, $415,000, and Salem, like I mentioned. So I honestly don't think this marijuana revenue is that significant, especially as more communities do allow the sale of it. But I do have revenue statistics for six out of the 10 from 2022 to 2023. Unfortunately, the Department of Revenue has not listed, updated their website to include all these revenues from the other four communities. But Amesbury, like I said, was $414,000. Their revenue this year in 2023 dropped $63,000. Georgetown, their revenue was $144,000. They basically stood even. Gloucester was $304,000 in 2022. Their revenue dropped $12,000 in 2023. Melrose, their revenue in 2022 was $300,000. Their revenue dropped $7,000 for 2023. Raleigh, their revenue in 2022 was $218,000. Their revenue dropped $6,000 in 2022, ah, 2023. Salisbury, their revenue in 2022 was $423,000. Their revenue dropped this year to $220,000. $117,000 dropped. So as you see, the communities report in losing revenue from 2022 to 2023. I want to put this all in respect of what Saugus receives in their local receipts. If you look at Saugus' local receipts, motor vehicle excise tax, we bring in $4,500,000. Our meals tax, we bring in $1.7 million a year. Our room tax, we bring in $800,000 a year. Penalties and interest on taxes and excise taxes, $414,000 a year. Building permits, $1.7 million a year. Fines and forfeits, $308,000 a year. And our investment income, $1.2 million a year. So when you look at possibility of receiving $300,000 from marijuana establishment, I don't think that's really a significant amount of money for Saugus. And so I just want people to know what I'm thinking of and how I vote and the reasons why. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Serena. Selectman Riley, did you want to add anything?
No, just wait to the votes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this meeting is being recorded. All of our selectman meetings are recorded, and this is also live, so people are watching this at home. We had a continued hearing on the adult use marijuana establishments in the town of Saugus from October 10th, 2023. There was going to be a meeting on November 14th. It was never posted because we didn't have enough people to actually take the vote. So we're here tonight, and I have full intention of us taking a vote this evening. The first applicant that we have on the agenda to be brought forward is Broadway Cannabis. It's an application for an S-2 permit to Broadway Cannabis. Location 1268 Broadway, Saugus, Mass. for a retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws. This is the former Out of Asia location. And just to mention, the reason why the October 10th, 2023, was continued was because not all the abutters were notified. We made sure that every abutte was notified before this meeting in plenty of time. So is Broadway Cannabis here this evening? Yes? Could you please come up? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion. We take off the table the Broadway Cannabis application for public hearing.
Okay. That's seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please give your name and address just for the record, please?
The address of the business proposal or my personal address?
Your personal address, please.
Jeffrey Rylinger, 770 Boylson Street, Boston, Mass., 02199.
Thank you. So tonight, you are in the former Out of Asia location. Is there anything else you'd like to say before we take?
It's beneath Out of Asia. It's not Out of Asia, it's the one below, which was the Church of Good News, and their name has evolved and migrated, so it's another church.
Very good.
Yep.
Do board members have any questions for the applicant this evening? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion. We close the public hearing.
That's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Selectman Serena.
Madam Chairman, just on this application here, I have notes on all of them.
Can't hear you.
I'm not going to support this location. The applicant never submitted-
You can't hear him. You can't, not hear him.
Okay. Let's try this.
Is the motion to deny?
Yeah, I just want to give my reasons why I don't support this application. The applicant, of course, did not submit all the information as requested in the RFI. And, you know, we did drop some information off later at the selectman's office, but you have to ask yourself, if you can't submit information according to an RFI, how successful can you be in a business? The site visit was not possible for the committee, but the applicant did have a license in Boston, which he recently sold. And, you know, we're about in 25 residential homes on that street. And we have also, it's close to the Cappy's Retail Establishment that just opened up. And so I'm not going to support this license for this location.
So the motion's to deny?
Motion to deny, yep.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Selectman Cogliano?
No.
Selectman Riley?
No.
Selectman Serena?
Yes.
Chairman Panetta? I'm sorry, the motion did not pass. It was two to two, which means that it failed. You did not get granted a license. I do appreciate your interest in Saugus, and thank you for coming this evening. The next applicant on the agenda is Bostica. It's an application for an S-2 permit for Bostica. Location 44 Broadway, Unit A, Saugus, Massachusetts, for a retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws. And this is the former Oy's Restaurant location. Good evening. Could you please give your name?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion. We take this off the table.
Okay. That's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Capano. I live at 9 Herman Road in Lynn, Massachusetts, 01904. I have some materials to present to the Board. I also have a copy for the record, if you don't mind me passing that out here.
Thank you. Thank you. You could, but he can't vote on it. But you could. Thank you.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Jonathan Capano. I've had the privilege to present in front of you prior to this meeting, and thank you for another opportunity to present to you here tonight. Bostica is proposing to make a change to our application. Now, this is due to the new regulations that were promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission. Those regulations were enacted on October 27th, 2023. So our prior meeting was before this change was made to the regulations. What I've handed out to the Board of Selectmen tonight is a copy of the section I will be citing here in my presentation tonight. This is 935 CMR 500 181, titled "Minimum Acceptable Equity Standards Governing Municipalities and Host Communities." If you go to Section 181.3, you'll find a section highlighted in your packet. This packet states, I mean, this section states, "Equity Standards for Host Communities to Promote and Encourage Full Participation in the Regulated Marijuana Industry." A. Municipalities are presumed to have met the Commission's minimal acceptable equity standards for promoting and encouraging full participation in the regulated marijuana industry by taking one of the following actions. One, adopting an ordinance or bylaw that exclusively permits social equity businesses for three years or until the goal of the exclusivity period has been met. Two, adopt the model ordinance or bylaw created by the Commission to permit a social equity business. Three, creating a local approval process for equity applicants that is administered on a one-to-one basis where a general applicant may be approved only after a social equity business has commenced operations. Host communities may administer a one-to-one local approval process until such time at 50% of the licenses operating in the host community are social equity businesses. Now, I'll bring your attention over to the next page under Section E. It states, "Any interested person may file a complaint with the Commission alleging noncompliance with the equity requirement under 935 CMR 500 181. If the Commission substantiates an allegation of noncompliance with the said section, a host community shall be fined after first receiving notice and opportunity for corrective action pursuant to 935 CMR 310 and 935 CMR 500 320. Host community shall be fined in an amount equal to annual total community impact fees received by the marijuana establishments and MTCs operating in the host community during the calendar year." Now, the relevance to this, we'll bring you to the next page in the packet that I presented. Per the special permit application, we were required to submit an affidavit of designated owners. Here, you'll see the document executed by our Chief Operating Officer, Jared Fellidi. Following that page, you'll see an updated individual interest documentation. All three of the people listed here, you've met. I've presented in the beginning of marijuana in Saugus. Ray and Jared have been involved from the beginning of Bostica on that first section. You'll then go down to the organizational chart, where you'll see the suggested corporate structure for Bostica LLC. Bostica Holdings LLC, wholly owned and managed by Jared and Ray Fellidi, is the parent company of Bostica LLC. Bostica LLC is wholly owned by Jared and Ray Fellidi, is the entity licensed by the CCC to operate the cultivation license and product manufacturing license in Lynn. Bostica Holdings will establish a Saugus Retail License Limited Liability Company for the entity that operates the retail license if approved. Jonathan Capano, a social equity program participant, will own 51% of the Saugus Retail License. This has been disclosed to you, my involvement in Bostica, in the following document, "An Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding, Executed by Myself and Jared Fellidi, on December 8th, 2023." In your special permit packet, you've seen a letter titled "Type of Delivery License: Marijuana Delivery Operator Notice: Delivery Pre-Certification Application Approved." Why I'm referencing this document is that I have proof that I am a social equity business, a social equity program participant, which would allow me the protections under 935 CMR 500 181 in this process as a 51% owner of Bostica's retail location in Saugus. Following that, I've reviewed both the RFI requirements and the special permitting requirements. There's nothing that says that we can't submit this change to the Board of Selectmen here tonight. So I appreciate your time to allow me to present, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
I have a question, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
Is the grow facility fully operational now?
The grow facility is up for post-final license inspection, which on Monday, December 18th. That will allow us to then engage in business activities exporting product from our facility. Right now, we've been growing since August. We've had our first harvest. We've submitted our first sample to Ketchum Labs, an independent testing laboratory. So we are right around the corner of having business exporting out of the facility to dispensaries here in Massachusetts.
Thank you. Another question. How many parking spaces do you have on site?
My count was roughly 70 to 75, with the ability to expand upon existing land owned by the current owner. But we understand that we've, and we've discussed with a tenant back there, that they would request some fencing, which we'd be more than happy to provide.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Are there any other questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a public meeting, public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Could you please come, your name and address, please?
Valerio Romano, 34 Elm Street in Cohasset. I don't know if I want to speak necessarily in favor or against, and it shut me down immediately, but I thought maybe if the Board wanted to discuss the amendments to the host community agreement, oh, I'm sorry, to the regulations regarding citing equity businesses further before just relying on what was stated and making a decision on that applicant based on that, this might be, you know, a time to do so. But I, you know, but I'm not for or against. I support, you know, cannabis everywhere. Obviously, we have our issues with, given the bylaw and our proximity and the ability of having the two businesses. But other than that, I mean, Jonathan's great, and I have no objections, you know, to them. But I do, I do think that it's not quite clear cut, you know, that the Board has to act on the S-2 permit based on equity provisions. So, and I don't know if it's worth engaging in further or not.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Anything that they would like to ask conditional questions to? Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the Board?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Cogliano.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Bostica.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion. We close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we got to do that first.
Thank you, Selectman Serena.
And then I'll yield to Selectman Cogliano.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. It is seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Selectman Cogliano.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Bostica application for an S-2 permit for Boston, Bostica location, 44 Broadway, Unit A, Saugus, Mass., for retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws. The reason I make this motion is they have the most parking. They have two curb cuts. They have, if not the largest grow facility in the state, certainly one of them, state-of-the-art, excellent facility right here in Lynn. I just think that we probably wouldn't be here tonight without Mr. Capano's expertise in helping change the zoning bylaw in the first place through town meeting. His knowledge on the subject is unparalleled. He's done a fantastic job. They put on a great presentation. And like I said at the previous hearing, I think because of a personal connection to me, Mr. Fellidi was slighted in the award process and the grading by the committee, and I didn't think that was fair, so I want to offer that tonight. But I do, if we have two locations side by side, and one has parking for 75 cars with two curb cuts, and one has one curb cut with 13 parking spaces, and we're voting on location, obviously, this is a better location. So that's why I offer the motion.
Okay. And that motion is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Selectman Cogliano? I'm sorry. Did you say selectman?
Yeah.
We all said.
Just to explain my vote.
Did you want to explain your vote before you vote or after you vote?
Before I vote.
Okay.
Does that work?
Whatever works for you.
Okay. I just want to say, I agree with Selectman Cogliano. I know we're supposed to be on a location, but I believe that it's a plus in retail sales when you are also the producer. So I wanted to just clarify why my vote would be yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to make a quick comment. The applicant, you really don't have any experience in the retail business, and I believe the committee also responded about that. I know you're waiting for final approval in August, you said, or you got final approval, but you don't have at least a year or two of experience where we can see that you're successful in that. It's a location we're really voting on too, and you do have a community up there with about 20 residents that are on that street, and so I'm not going to support this application. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion. It's seconded by the Chair. We had discussion. Roll call vote, please.
If possible, would it be?
We're in a vote now.
Okay.
But if hearing's been closed.
Roll call vote, please. Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serena?
Yes.
Chairman Panetta? No.
I'm sorry, I want to change. I thought Anthony made a motion to approve it.
To approve.
I did.
Oh, okay. I thought he made a motion to deny. Change my vote to no, please.
No? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to thank you very much. I know that you put a lot of time into Saugus, and I appreciate all of your- I know that you put a lot of time into Saugus, and I appreciate all your efforts. It did not pass, but again, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Riley?
On the first vote, Selectman Serino had said to deny, and when I went to vote, I didn't want to vote. I wanted to vote yes instead of no. So I messed up.
You wanted to vote yes to deny?
To deny. And I didn't know, seeing that, like, I was trying to think, I was trying to say no to the application.
I see.
But the way that it was worded, I voted the wrong way. So I don't know if I can change that, or if we can revote it, but only because, again, of the location was I not in favor when there's only two licenses to give, I didn't want to, or three, I didn't want that one to get it only because of the location of the Out of Asia building.
Okay. So I think that it was denied. I think that Janice could put that in the minutes that Selectman Riley wanted to vote in favor of the denial.
You did it backwards. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have that put in the minutes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Serino.
I'll make a motion, we take off the table number three, the Northeast Can application, 1529 Broadway.
Okay, and that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four to zero. So our third applicant is Northeast Can, application for an S2 permit for Northeast Can, 1529 Broadway, Saugus, Mass., for retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws. And this is the Avalon Motel location, correct?
Correct.
And would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Oh, could we please have your name and address?
My name is Jonathan Bernia, 640 Highland Ave, Westport, Massachusetts. I'm the CEO of Northeast Can. I wasn't going to get up and get into a little bit of this tonight, but after seeing what one of the selectmen is bringing up past comments from the application process, I figured I would just comment on some things we were voted low point-wise for. We do not have an operational facility open yet. We do have provisional license and are in architectural build-out right now, at a very strategic location in Swansea, Mass. We, I've been in this industry for 15 years. I started off at a state licensed facility in Rhode Island. I've built out cultivations, dispensaries, ran multiple of them, managed multiple of them, more than everybody in this room combined. I consult for cultivations, I fix the problems that they have. I'm known throughout the industry, you can call many of different large 100,000 square foot facilities, that I go and help issues with powdered mildew, bugs, general making sure that facilities are operating better than, you know, what they should be, what they could be. As far as retail locations go, we could have had three, four, five, six of these open already, retail locations, but it'd be in horrible areas. We weren't looking to get into a location that was in a bad area, where it wouldn't make money and would hurt our locations. So we picked locations strategically. So it's not that we don't have, it's our choice we don't have an open facility. It's not by us not being qualified. CEO, CEO who's not available tonight, he has over 30 successful businesses that are still in operation today. The last one, he exited out to private equity, that had over 300 employees that he founded, and he was a main important part of that every day. So as far as where we scored low on our experience, I make up for the experience, and then running a business is running a business, whether it's marijuana, a restaurant, alcohol, a town, running a business is running a business. And if you've ran successful businesses, you can run a successful cannabis business as well, as long as you have the proper location. With that being said, I'd like to bring up Pasquale Rusellano, who has, he's local to this area, and he has a lot more knowledge on this area and info about location.
Thank you. First of all, congratulate all four of you to get reelected, and Madam Chair for taking care. And congratulations.
Thank you.
It means a lot, obviously, that the residents of Saugus have trust in you. My name is Pasquale Rusellano. I live in six-seat lane in Georgetown. I'm a, I've been living in the Commonwealth since I've been born. I've been living in Essex County for 20-something years. I'm a retired major from the state police. Most of my career encompassed, and I worked in the Essex area. When I retired as the major, I dealt with the 37 chiefs within Essex County for two and a half years, and there's nobody that knows this roadway better than I do, because I patrolled it, and I supervised it, and I commanded it. On some of the comments that were made regarding why we didn't score that well, well, I'd like to start off with the location obviously being Avalon. I know all four of you care about this city, care about the services that are being used, fire department, police department, EMTs. In the last three years, 150 calls were sent either by the police, fire, or EMT to go to the Avalon Hotel. Today, we have a problem with recruiting officers. Officers and fire department and EMTs are overworked. Those 150 calls could have been used somewhere that is more prudent for the city than keep going back to the Avalon. We all know about the theory of the broken window theory. You drive by a place, you see a broken window, you break another window because it's not being up kept. That's going on with the Avalon Hotel for numerous years. I am stating you facts here. This is nothing that's made up. You talk about the locations being close to each other. If I may, with all due respect, Serino, that the location from Avalon to the one in Malden is 1.8 miles, the shortest route. The longest route is four miles. Uber Flowers to Peabody, as you guys are aware, there's a cannabis section up in Peabody. Yes, it's not open yet, but that's 0.8 miles. So if you took that, and then you took the Melrose one that is close 0.8, you have Malden at 1.8 and higher 4.2 miles. Talk about lane control. That safe place there in front of Avalon, you have a lane, a right lane, right lane only. That is your traffic control. You're in that lane, you can't go anywhere else but right lane. So if you happen to say, oh, God, I have to go to the Tobin Bridge, you have the access of going to 99, taking a left, and going right on to Tobin. And mind you, you have a Dunkin' Donuts that was built there. Kane's Donuts came there, 385 feet away. I'm glad you put Kane's Donuts there. It's good for the city, it's good for everybody, it's good for revenue, but the state that we're too close to a facility, where there are traffic problems there, that's not true. There were traffic problems there in the past. Mass Highway did the right thing and put that traffic control lane, the right lane only, and the crashes have gone down considerably. You can look that up on the MassDOT website. These are all facts that I'm giving you. And getting back to the gentleman before, we talked about equity. Gabe Ruins is Latino, he's of Latino descent. 80% of these applications are given to white Conchadians. Less than 8% are given to anybody from the Latino community. So I think that should be taken into consideration. And also, we talk about someone not having the business experience. If that ideology was used from the time that cannabis came into Massachusetts, there'd not be one company here, not one. We had to start from something. That should not be held against us that we don't have one operative. We're self-funded, we're very professional, we take this serious. We believe that the Avalon Hotel is the best location for this town, and the resources were better used with police, fire, and EMTs at other locations. Now, mind you, I only gave you three years of statistics. 150 times services were called here, and I got that right from the chief, the police chief secretary, who said to me, it's going to take a few days to extract that information. So I would just really have you guys think about what's being said here, and think about that location, and think about the town of Saugus, how that can be better used. Remember, we went through the Hilltop, we went through the Valley Steakhouse, we went through Augustine's, and whoever thought that, oh, my God, that's going to close, how do we bounce back in Saugus? Well, you guys did bounce back. You bounced back because you're resilient. So take some real consideration about this Avalon Hotel location, and give us a chance to go there and prove to you and everyone that we're the right people for that location. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the select board. My name is Nicholas Gomes. I'm an attorney representing Northeast Can Incorporated. My address is 67 Battery March Street in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm going to be quick, and I'm here advocating for my client to transition the Avalon Motel into a first-rate premier retail establishment, but I'm also here to advocate for all of the citizens in Saugus, who I believe deserves the highest chance of earning as much revenue as possible with this new cannabis industry. And because of that, we would request that you vote for as many facilities as you can under the law. When you look at the zoning bylaw for the special permit, it is specific that your duty is essentially to analyze the location, the impact on the neighborhood, and the word that sticks out to me is that it's in harmony with the purpose of the bylaw. And that requires the board to look at the sitting of this location here on a grand scale of the entire community, and where we sit as a landmark on the southbound highway, but then also the property itself, and how we are securely nestled in a location that catches everyone's eye on Route 1. This is an opportunity to turn an eyesore into something the community can be proud of. This is going to be a location that is logistically smooth. We have the 20 parking spaces, but this type of proposed use is not a Walmart. You do not need the large parking that you would see back in 2018. And it's important to note from the financial standpoint, from 2018 to now, it's over a five, almost $5.5 billion. For 2023, from January till Thanksgiving, it was $1.4 billion. So I did hear the statistics earlier regarding revenue, but this is a market that is there, it is thriving, it is having some balancing, you could say, but it's an opportunity for Saugus to grab it. And looking at the specifics of this location, our traffic study indicated that there was no issue with anticipated volume, parking, or the sightlines. We fit in the neighborhood. There's no residences around us. Behind us is a beautiful tapestry of forestry. We're going to clean up this area, remove the U shape of the motel building, and put something there that the residents and people who are driving by are going to want to stop in. They're going to want to experience what Northeast Can has to offer, and that is the most important decision that is going to protect the public welfare that the decision is based on is, who is viable? We have a team of dedicated members who have been with me at every single meeting. The background of the individuals coming together and their unique experiences sets them apart where they're willing to put the quality in over quantity, and they hope that they can rest their hat and be a part of the community here in Saugus. So thank you for the opportunity, and I request a vote in favor of Northeast Can and their project at 1529 Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions to the applicant?
I have a couple of comments, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I agree with the, with the two previous speakers. The Avalon Motel is nothing but an eyesore. It's a, any opportunity we have to remove that from the town and replace it with something of quality is a win-win for Saugus. So we're going to eliminate that eyesore, the problem that it brings, especially today with the influx of people coming into our country. These are the places they inhabit, you know? We got no place to go. They go to the Colonial Traveler, they go to the Avalon Motel, they go to the Holiday Inn, they go to the Red Roof Inn, and that's what these places bring today. And if we don't approve something better than that there, I totally think that they're going to expand that use and add more to the problem that we don't need. So I think this is a chance to eliminate something that's been nothing but a problem, an eyesore, and it's beyond belief that this wasn't a location that was selected when you can improve the town drastically by doing something like this. And the other thing that makes no sense to me at all is worrying about how close we are in proximity to another store. When you drive by a McDonald's, what's the first thing you see? Burger King. What do you see after Burger King? Wendy's? Because that's how these places work. One of the busiest marijuana locations in this area is in Melrose, and what do you have to do to get there? You have to drive by this one to get to that one. Of course, people are going to stop. It's a brand-new building, it's a great facade. The one in Melrose is just, you know, they're lucky, they're in a good spot. This is, this is an eye catcher. People are going to stop here as they're going around. It also is a chance to have something down this end of Saugus. You know, the two locations picked by the committee, you have to drive up to Linfield to turn around to come back. This is, this is a great location, it's in a perfect area, and it cleans up the area. I would support it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree in the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Anybody from the audience like to speak?
I was going to ask if you.
I'll make comments after we close the public hearing.
Already then. Would anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of? I'm sorry?
I just wanted to say that approving this applicant is better than what's there today. So I just want to make that clear, too, for the vote.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to close the public.
Madam Chairman, just for my comments on the.
We didn't vote on closing the public hearing yet. No, you made the motion, I seconded it. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Selectman Serino.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'd just like to make a few comments about the site. It's, I honestly think it's a difficult site to get into. When I went to inspect it, I almost got hit in the back of my car on Route 1 over there. And I know you do own other establishments in Swansea and Kingston, or Swansea Retail Establishment, Kingston a cultivation facility, and none of the facilities have been open yet. So I do look at the experience, and I have to evaluate, I believe, which applicant be successful in town. You know, do we approve all seven establishments and see who's going to be successful or not? I don't think that's the right avenue to go with. And, you know, you do have an establishment right around the corner in Melrose. Personally, I would rather go there. I think it's safer for anybody to go to that establishment than trying to get into the Avalon Hotel. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
All right, so we've had some discussion. Would anybody like to make a motion? Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Kareem.
Selectman Riley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license for Northeast Can, application for an S2 permit for 1529 Broadway, for retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Janice. Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
No.
Chairman Panetta?
No.
Where did they go? The applicant isn't standing at the lectern anymore, but I want to thank you for your interest in Saugus and all the time and effort that you put into our town and community. It did not pass this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Serino.
I'll make a motion, we take number four, Old World Remedies off the table, 173 Main Street.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four to zero. The next applicant we have before us is Old World Remedies. It's an application for an S2 permit for Old World Remedies, 173 Main Street, Saugus, Mass., for retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws. And this is in the Auto Excellence location. Would you like to come up and address the board? And your name and address, please, Joe. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Alan Rothenberg from Old World Remedies. My address is 1 Longfellow Place, Boston, Massachusetts. And not prepared to give any presentation, I didn't know there was one expected, but I can answer any questions that you have.
Do board members have any questions for the applicant this evening?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
Selectman Serino gave some figures tonight regarding what towns are bringing in from marijuana. Those?
Well, yeah, actually, I can address that. You mentioned Lynn, which is a town that I'm in. Some of the towns that you mentioned that are bringing in very little revenue have very few stores, and they're very small towns. If you look at what we expect to do here, all of us on Route 1, is going to be extremely higher revenue for this town than most of the other towns say. In Lynn, where we are, there are eight stores. You mentioned that they only bring in about $300 or something thousand. We are the number. We are the number-one store in Lynn. We've been in operation for over two years. The competition is very heavy, but as I said, we have proved ourselves to be number one amongst that competition. We service the community. We've built parks for the neighborhood. And actually, where we're located, there were a lot of arrests for drugs since we've opened. That has gone away against, you know, the security cameras and stuff around. Otherwise, we're one of the most experienced. We're rated always in the top five as far as Google searches or anything else. And we have an endless supply of product, actually probably the widest selection in the state. And as I mentioned, we're usually rated in the top five in the state consistently with plenty of experience. And not just in this, somebody else mentioned, I've actually had nine companies prior to this, all successful in different industries. This one is the most difficult, and, you know, I think you guys realize that. In regards to my location, I'd like to bring that up again. I know it was panned last time, but if you had a chance to go by, we're the only ones that actually have an off-ramp to our building. And our proposal is to actually have the nicest store in the state. That's what I expect, the highest revenue of any store in the state as well, being on Route One on the southbound side in this 5,000-plus-square-foot facility, which is one of the prettiest buildings in Saugus as well. Nothing else to say except to answer questions.
Yeah, one other question. Again, talking about a visual blight, you have the biggest eyesore in the town right in front of the location you're trying to get. Is that something you would explore?
No, we've been trying. That's actually how we found our location. We tried getting there initially, and it is a disaster. The only person that I know that's really in touch with the owner is Mehdi, the landlord for my facility. And he's the only one actually that has any accessibility to buy it. It's not set back far enough to put a self-standing building. So I've already proposed to you, it's in our proposal, as soon as that becomes available and we're trying to acquire it, we're just going to clean it up with whatever the city wants, including expanding an off-ramp if you need that. We're willing to build that as well. We're going to put bushes, trees, whatever the city wants. Actually, my landlord wants to put a colored fountain there as well, showing how pretty Saugus is. It's not a buildable lot, but we are trying to acquire it. And we would be the only ones that would be able to acquire it.
Just one other point, Madam Chairman. When I went toward all these facilities, the grow facilities there, dispensaries, Alan's location in Lynn was by far the busiest for the time that I was there. I think that counts for something.
Yeah, we really are a family-run. My son runs the store, my daughter buys all the products, I, you know, run it as well. We're there, you know, 24/7, and it is our life. And the only place that we've been looking for, we don't have a lot of other locations, just Saugus, and we've been waiting for this for a long time. And I'm convinced as well that we probably would have about $20 million at that location in revenue upon which you would be getting at least, you know, your fair percent at a minimum. If you look up my personal record, which I mentioned last time, we've contributed to almost probably at least half the police departments in the state, also up in New Hampshire. My family has been as charitable as we can. We promise to give all our profits. I mean, did that in Lynn. The profits aren't as high as they should be because we have eight stores, but all that money does go back to the city. Every employee is local, and as I mentioned, we'll be doing the same thing here. So we'll be employing only Saugus residents. All the money will be coming back into Saugus and at the town manager's disposal is what he wants to do with it, whether it's for the schools, which I'd love to see, whether it's to clean up parks. And again, as an individual, we participate in our communities like we did in Lynn. We weren't required to build a park, but we did to make the neighborhood nicer. And I am one of the most supportive people of both police departments, fire department, and schools. I mentioned earlier, my wife is a schoolteacher for the past 10 years. She's not doing it for the money, special education in the Boston Public School system. And myself, most of my companies have been to protect and help people. And that's actually our goal for the marijuana industry that we got into, was the money was supposed to go back to help people in need and sick people. And here I am.
Thank you. I'd just quickly mention that the property where Carla Shoes used to be, that's been for sale now for quite some time. They won a lot of money for it, but it's been for sale for quite some time.
She's not selling for some reason.
Well, the broker called me up because I mentioned it at one of the Board of Health meetings and asked if the town wanted to buy it. And I couldn't see a use for the town having that piece of property, but I do know that they had a broker.
If I'm awarded, I will promise to buy that property and let the town do what they want with it.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Chairman, just a question to the applicant. How many marijuana, retail marijuana establishments operate in Lynn?
Seven, and they're opening up an eighth. Every time they open, we take a small hit, but eventually bounce back. Again, local, and we have the largest product selection probably in the state and the best pricing.
Yeah, I know. That's why I mentioned in my opening speech about revenue, you have seven establishments in Lynn, brought in $326,000 in 2022, so you're looking at about $50,000 per establishment. That's not a lot of money. And having talked to someone, the deputy bureau chief from the Department of Revenue, who I've talked to when I was on the Board of Assessors, she even said as more of these establishments open up, the revenue's just going to be divided by all these establishments. You're not going to see any increase, so...
Correct. As I said, we still contribute to the community. We haven't stopped. We give over $100,000 a year back to Lynn, which isn't required. That's our, unfortunately, you know, again, the competition's extreme in Lynn, and the profits aren't that great yet. As I mentioned here, though, this is a goldmine, I think, the Route One location. And I expect it to do about $20 million upon which, you know, it'll quadruple what we give to Saugus that we already do to Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from board members before I open it up to the public? This is a public hearing. Would anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectmen Serino.
I'll let Anthony...
Who said it?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that's seconded by the chair. As to further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Who would like to make the motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we deny the request, and it's based on the access to the site. It's very challenging. You really have to come in from Route One. You have the high school, middle high school right across the street. That's within 1,000 feet, and those would be my true reasons. Thank you.
We're over the 1,000-feet distance.
Selectmen Serino's motion is seconded by the chair. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Selectmen Cogliano.
Nope.
Selectmen Riley.
Yes, with, because again, with the location of the, on the highway coming off the main street ramp as well as the curb cuts, I feel that it's not a good place to have a lot of traffic, so...
Okay. Select... Okay. Selectmen Serino.
Yes.
Chairman Panetta.
Yes. Your, the motion did not pass. I do want to thank you very much for your interest in Saugus. It was a delight meeting your family, and we wish you well. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Do board members want to move on?
Madam Chair, will we take a two-minute recess?
Of course. Seconded by the chair. All those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. We're going to take a two-minute recess. Good evening. We're back in session. Did you want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take off the table Triple M Ventures at 1393 Broadway.
And that's seconded by the chair. As to further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Our applicant that we have before us is Triple M Vetches, the application for an S-2 permit for Triple M Vetches, 1393 Broadway, Saugus, Mass. for a retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
And you are at the All Tune and Lube location.
I'm sorry, I heard a mean.
You are at the All Tune and Lube location.
Yes, that's correct.
I just, people get confused with the names. If you tell them the location of something that's there, they can...
Visualize it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Leanne Ankner. My address is 226 Beacon Street in Boston, 02116. I'm a co-founder of Triple M. So I wanted to begin just by noting that in the Merck report, we were awarded near-perfect or perfect scores as to all matters that related to business and professional operations of a cannabis retail operator. That's due to our having provided successful, compliant, professional retail cannabis experience for, as of this January, a six-year period at two separate locations, in Plymouth and in Mashpee. That said, the Merck report raised concerns about our location, and at the S-2 hearing that we presented at in September, I addressed those concerns head-on. We believe that the Merck concerns were based on misinformation that they had at the time, and I addressed those in great detail, going line by line in rebuttal of the factual information that they were considering. I'd like to, I'd like to provide a summary of those issues for the board to consider when you're evaluating whether to proceed with our request for an S-2 permit. The first issue, and one of the most fundamental, I think, was that our original out-of-town civil engineers had made a conclusion that we were limited to 11 parking spaces to support our operations, and that if we needed to have any additional parking spaces, we needed to obtain a variance. Subsequent to that conclusion, we engaged a respected established Saugus real estate attorney, attorney Nelson Chang, who specializes in zoning matters, and he reviewed it and concluded that that was quote-unquote erroneous. I did include that opinion letter for the board's consideration and connection with our S-2 application as Exhibit 11. And what attorney Chang noted is that there is no artificial maximum amount of parking spaces, but there is a requirement to have a minimum amount. And that minimum amount for Triple M at 1393 Broadway would be 10 parking spaces. We have hired Rick Salvo, who's an established, respected Saugus civil engineer. We provided the site layout in connection with our S-2 application, and he was able to afford us 30 parking spaces using both 1393 and 11 Boothard. Attorney Chang noted in his opinion letter that it was appropriate for us to use both locations because those, 11 Boothard is directly contiguous to 1393. It's owned by the same person, the same landlord. Our lease actually gives us the right to use 11 Boothard for parking purposes. It's within the zoning permission to use accessory parking, and the principal lot of 1393 satisfies the 10, the minimum of 10 parking spots. So he opined that it was appropriate. And then, in terms of public safety access, that question had been raised about accessing our property. Mr. Salvo and his civil engineering drawings that were submitted to the board, on the eastern side of the building, there's actually restricted fire access to accommodate a large fire ladder truck. I think it's a WB67E1 or something like that. But we had also provided two access points, one showing how a large ladder truck would access the western side of the building, but also the eastern side where Mr. Salvo had the restricted fire access. In addition, we showed, we provided two additional drawings to show how a first responder could access the site if they happened to miss the Boothard entrance to Triple M's, 1393, and they would go onto Essex Street. There's two different options for them to be able to access the site. One would be the most direct to go through residential neighborhood, and the other would be to go around Square One Mall to go back on Route One and come through Boothard. We had engaged Jeffrey Dirk of, the managing partner of Vanessa and Associates for a traffic impact assessment plan. He's very well-versed in Saugus traffic and has actually, and Route One in particular. He did a traffic impact assessment plan for Popeyes and also is well-versed in marijuana establishments. And he concluded our proposed operations would not have a significant impact on traffic flow over existing conditions. And he also noted that in the past five years, there has not been one accident, zero accidents at the intersection of Boothard and Route One. In terms of the buffer zone, so as you know, Section 22.4.1.8.1 of the Saugus Town Bylaws requires an adult-use retailer to be at least 1,000 feet away from a public or private school entrance. And that is, quote, "measured along the shortest publicly accessible pedestrian travel path from a marijuana establishment entrance to the school entrance." Our civil engineers have determined that that shortest available pedestrian travel path is 4,000 feet. So we meet the buffer zone by four times the required amount. But it's not just the physical separation that's at play here. We also have robust security policies and procedures in place to ensure there is no diversion to minors or to anybody at all. That includes, you know, making sure that people are not released from the man-trap foyer until their government-issued photo identification is verified through an ID scanner, that a second time is checked just before the point of sale. We have two security guards onsite at all times, that during hours of operation, to ensure that there's no onsite consumption and no diversion. These security guards make sure that when a customer leaves a building, that within five minutes, they're in the car and off the parking lot. Our product is priced above street value. Our employees are not allowed to bring any personal belongings into the retail store area. They have to keep it in lock, in lockers in the staff area, and that when they want to make purchases, it has to be after the shift, and they have to exit the building and go through the queue, just like any other customer, and not bring the, they can't bring the product back in. And finally, we have comprehensive physical counts every single day of inventory to make sure that whatever product is onsite actually matches what is in our CD sales software program. And if there's any discrepancies, we have video cameras around the premises that we review to dissolve any type of discrepancy. So we take very, very, very seriously making sure that there's no diversion to minors or to anybody else. There was a question that was raised about the environmental cleanup because it's the lube shop. Our landlord had obtained a quote from Neptune Engineering to have environmental cleanup to decommission the facility and the automatic lifts, and that showed that this project is discreet and contained. The quote was for $45,000 to take four to six weeks, and based on the independent lab testing that was done in the monitoring wells, there was no leaching into the groundwater. There are five, there are five residential homes that are within 300 feet of 1393 Broadway. These are all appropriately zoned within the Business Highway Sustainable District, but interestingly, they're all owned by our landlord. So these five residential homes, their tenants, if they would ever have a complaint, they would have a conversation with their landlord, and the landlord has direct access to us. We would make sure that we would remediate any concern at any time. So, you know, we feel as though we've fully addressed the concerns that were raised by Merck with respect to our location, and we think that coupled with our professional experience of six years of retail cannabis sales, that we would be a valued and viable partner with Saugus to operate a marijuana retail establishment. And I welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you. Do the members have any questions?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I just want to say that I went and toured their facilities, their dispensaries, their grow facility, impeccable operation. I don't think any one of us can deny that this woman here made the best presentation by far at every single meeting, and utmost professional, the location, there were, it was addressed by Rick Salvo and Attorney Nelson Chang. I think they certainly know the zoning bylaws here in Saugus better than anybody, so that shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem whatsoever. The biggest problem I have with this, and this goes back to the fact that we are the Board of Selectmen, and we got a report that we're not allowed to ask questions on. This is a prime example where if the manager was sitting here, he could answer questions as why he chose not to have three licenses and only two. That doesn't make any sense to me. If we're trying to do this to bring maximized revenue for Saugus, why wouldn't we give out three licenses? Why would we limit it at two? Why was this, why was this place given number three when they were clearly number one on everything except location? And they worked out the location part. If the manager was here tonight, it would be easy to ask these questions, maybe someone consulted with them that two is going to bring more money to the town than three. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how that's possible, but again, we are the Board of Selectmen, we should be able to ask questions. We don't go to town meeting with a budget and hand it to them, tell them they have to vote it. You know, this is, this is what the whole process is about, it's communication, and we have none. This whole process through, we're kept in the dark right until we hand a report that I couldn't even ask a question on. I waited nine months to get it, couldn't ask a question, and I got no support from the Board as to the fact that we should be allowed to ask questions. That, to me, is mind-boggling. You know, it's my biggest frustration with the entire process. Maybe we could get a license out of this tonight if there were questions that could have been answered, but I certainly have the questions, and to make this place number three because of a glitch with the zoning that was corrected, when she's clearly number one, was a problem. But, again, we have three licenses, they should get one automatically. If we're going by, I see we put everyone in reverse order tonight from seven to number one to go through the Merck report, so we can eliminate the people and only have two down the end. I see the strategy that was played, but when we get to this one here, you got to question why not three licenses, it's clearly the best applicant. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. They did get a good score on general, they were a couple less than the top vote getter on the business model. For impact, they only got a nine out of the 28, and for location, they got a one, just as a review. Are there any other comments or questions?
Madam Chairman, just one quick question, and we went over this at the last meeting regarding how you calculated the feet from your property to the high school. And I believe you told me, was that from a Boston or a Mass. state law?
So that's, so the 1,000 feet, it's, it's the Saugus requirement that it be from the closest accessible pedestrian pathway. It also works the same on the, for the CCC on the state level, although it's only 500 feet, because there's an impassable barrier, which is Route One, so they basically have the same...
State law? CCM, that's just a, that's not a law, that's a, sort of like a guideline or a requirement?
It's a requirement.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
If you could just explain how they calculate that, though?
Yes.
Because you're 4,000 feet, you can't walk across Route One to get to your place.
Exactly, so it's, it's through the, it's the closest available pedestrian pathway walk so that, because you can't walk across Route One, and so you measure it by that standard.
Right.
So that's where the 4,000 feet came into play.
4,000, yeah. I know our zoning bylaws is just from the property line, and you go 1,000 feet, you're going to hit the football field, you're going to hit the high school property.
Right, but the measurement, actually, under the Saugus bylaws, is that it be the nearest accessible pedestrian pathway.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any other questions before I open it up to the public?
Madam Chairman, just one question. Have any members of the Board had discussions as to why there's only two licenses, why they only picked two?
I think that they picked two to see how the two would go, is my, is my understanding.
Well, I mean...
Let's see how, let's see how two would work out. I mean, we don't have to vote two, we could vote one.
Well, the problem with, with that rationale is if you deny all these applicants, they can't apply for two more years. So if we're going to do two and see if possibly we're going to add a third one later, well, everyone that's in this room tonight is shut out of that process, including the best applicant before us. So to me, that makes no sense.
Madam Chairman.
I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
You can see where this is going, I'd withdraw your application.
Okay, so I, at this, at this time, I think that Triple M would like to withdraw its application for an S2 permit at 1393 Broadway.
Does somebody want to make that on the phone of a motion?
I'll offer that as a motion if you would like to do that.
I'm sorry.
You don't want to, I'll offer it.
Did you make it? Did you, did you offer it?
Actually, she wants to withdraw.
Okay, withdraw the application.
Withdraw without prejudice.
Without vote, yes.
Okay, that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I want to call a vote, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
No.
Selectman Panetta?
So that does not pass.
So my withdrawal does not pass?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Cogliano.
I'll make a motion to grant the request, then.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion from the Board?
Oh, do we know?
No.
Oh, okay. This is a public hearing, would anybody like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application?
Can I just say something?
Sure.
Why don't we offer...
Pat, just come up to the...
Can you just give this people a step to withdraw? Why didn't we get that opportunity?
Because you didn't ask for it.
But here, Mr. Cogliano talked about it.
I didn't hear him.
What did he do? I heard him. Everyone in this room heard him.
He's talking about just now.
Everyone heard him. This is not fair, we should be given that same opportunity.
It was denied.
What's that?
It was denied. Mr. Cogliano...
Sir, sir, so either go to the podium or please sit down.
You can hear my voice, come on.
I, I know, but people in the audience need to hear you, people at home need to hear you.
I may be a little bomb-bastard, believe me, I'm not going to lose it here, I'm all about facts here, balls and strikes. Mr. Cogliano suggested something, we should be given that same opportunity, and everybody in this room should be.
I'll be, if I could just address that, Pat. The reason I brought it up is because we have three licenses to give, and they were clearly, in my opinion, they were the best applicant. And the fact that I can see the way that this is going, I could have told you this an hour and a half ago, we could have all gone home at seven o'clock and saw that we're working up to the two, two top applicants. After we made this speech about money and what they don't bring in, I'm surprised we're going to get anyone tonight, but on this particular occasion, I suggested it to this applicant because they scored number three, and I would like to get some explanation as to why three licenses wouldn't work, because I think three would work fine in this town. We gave a license down this end of the town, certainly could have afforded it to everybody, but you can see the way that that's going, they're not even going to allow that. So the leave to withdraw is not going to be allowed because it's, it's a predetermined outcome.
Well, that's two separate issues. Whatever is predetermined, I can't, you know, speak about, but I just listened to what you just said and what this young lady did, we would have taken that same opportunity because when we got up here, we, after a couple of things were asked, we knew where it was going.
Right, and, but they weren't afforded that opportunity anyways, so I suggested that they withdraw, and she actually suggested that she withdraw, and Mr. Serino and Chairman Panetta voted no on the withdrawal, so that there wasn't an option.
So...
She asked to withdraw, they said no.
And they said no.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you made the motion?
I made the motion to approve it.
And it was seconded by the Chair. Further discussion, seeing none. Janice?
Janice.
Hi, Janice. We'll call a vote, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Selectman Cogliano?
100%, yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
No.
Chairman Panetta?
No. Thank you very much, appreciate your time. Do you want to take Sanctuary Medicinals off the table?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion we take Sanctuary Medicinals off the table, they're at 181 Broadway.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Sanctuary Medicinals, we have an application for an S2 permit for Sanctuary Medicinals, 181 Broadway, Mass. for retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws, and this is the former 99 Restaurant location. Good evening, your name and address, please.
My name is James Alex, I live at One Surph Village in Manchester by the Sea, 01944.
Thank you.
I'm a co-founder and partner at Sanctuary Medicinals, and thank you all for taking the time to consider us tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Do both members have any questions this evening?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Cogliano.
Just like to make a comment, I did tour Jimmy's facilities, the grow facility, his dispensaries, again, impeccable operation, they gave me a tour of everything. I think he'd be a fine welcome addition to the town, he's a very smart businessman, and he'd be a welcome addition.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Anyone else?
Like to ask any questions?
Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Yes, sir.
This is happening against you and your business, you guys are great people.
This is about, you have to speak on the application, on the application.
Explain to me, the first travel lane in front of his place and our control lane in front of ours. Do you guys know the difference between a control lane and an open lane? Explain to me, do you guys know there's more crashes at Walnut Street right up from what his location is? Explain to me that, so then I can walk out here knowing that it was fair. Explain to me. He has an open lane, you pick up all kinds of speed coming to that location, come into our location, you slow down. So tell me why, how was that overlooked?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serino.
Yeah, the police chief, the Saugus Police Chief was involved in the, on the committee and involved in the decision-making process, so I just assume take the Saugus's Police Chief recommendation versus yours, in all due respect.
As well as the fire chief.
As well as the fire chief, yeah.
Route One is state police property. You, you hear that? Route One is state police property. That was my area, I know that area, I'm an expert in that area. I know the area, the crashes, I know about the lanes. That answer you just gave does not suffice.
That's, I'm sorry, you don't like it, but that's how I feel.
What did you say?
I said, "I'm sorry you don't like it, but that's how I feel."
So the state police, then why do you call for crashes here?
Sir, sir, we're talking about this particular application.
I am, it's very important. How do you get by the first lane? We heard him say that he almost got hit coming into our location, maybe you didn't put your blinker on. So tell me how is his, how's this different? I'm telling you, that lane is worse than where we are.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Cogliano.
If I could just, just make a comment to Mr. Russell Lillo, again, these are questions that would have been nice to be able to ask the manager and his team, how they come up with these, with their assessment, but again, we weren't afforded that opportunity, and this is why we're here tonight.
Okay, we have Sanctuary Medicinals in front of us right now. Is there anybody on the Board who would like to ask any additional questions? We said no, I opened it up to the public. Is there anybody else in the audience? I'm sorry?
I thought, I thought to finish the audience, I was going to make a motion to close the hearing.
Oh, you could make, I think, I don't see anybody else who'd like to speak, so you can close the public hearing. Is that in form of a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Selectman Cogliano.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Sanctuary Medicinals' application for an S2 permit for Sanctuary Medicinals, 181 Broadway, Mass. for retail marijuana dispensary special permit under zoning bylaws, formerly 99 Restaurant location.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Further discussion, seeing none. We'll call a vote, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Selectman Panetta?
Yes. So congratulations on receiving a permit, so now you're going to be working with the town manager?
That's correct.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
On the host community agreement, and then it's up to the state, the Cannabis Control Commission, to issue the license.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Good luck.
Next, we have Uma Flowers. Did you want to make a motion, Selectman Serino?
Yes, I'll make a motion we take off the table, Uma Flowers, 24 Broadway.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Good evening, name and address, please.
Good evening to the Board and to the Chair. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Valerio Romano, I'm the attorney for Uma Flowers, 34 Elm Street, and Cohasset is my business address. I'm joined by Priyanka and Tejal Patel, who are the founders of Uma Flowers, they're here if we have any additional questions that the founders may be able to answer. Just quickly, we know we're here for a marijuana retailer at 24 Broadway, I won't belabor the things that have been presented to the Board so far. One pretty critical update from our application, we have extended our retail experience, and now the Lunenburg facility that I know you were able to tour is now open as well, so we have two open retailers in the Commonwealth, which are, which are operational and licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission, so that was really exciting update for Uma. I, you know, I don't want to get too much into some of the back and forth, I know there was a concern with our site plan, and there was some misunderstanding that we had submitted a different site plan as part of our application here and our application to the Merck. I submitted a letter with the two site plans included, and I believe it's obvious that they're virtually identical with a couple updates based on the forum that we were providing them to. I also know that there was some confusion about our number of parking spaces, I heard the number 13 come out. Again, in the letter, I showed that we actually have access to 37 parking spaces, 26 onsite and some additional ones next door, 26 or 27 onsite. You know, it's a great team, with great retail experience. We satisfy the bylaw, we actually have two curb cuts as well proposed on our site plan, so I think it's, you know, it's a great opportunity, we're really excited and happy to present to the Board and happy that the Merck had given us such a high score. Now, sort of down to the, the sort of elephant in the room that we're all aware of, right? Bostica is within 1,000 feet of us, and there was some, you know, disagreement between members of the Board and the Merck as to which would be a better operator and a better location. And with that in mind, Uma actually tried to play Romeo and Juliet. We wanted to bring the Capulets and the Montagues together, and we actually reached out to Bostica some months ago, seeing, you know, the consternation that was going on and the sort of internal struggle that the town was having with our great location, our great team, their local connections, their access to vertically integrate, or to be vertically integrated with a large cultivation facility that by all accounts is, is well-constructed, although hasn't been open yet, hasn't had the opportunity to sell any cannabis yet, and we really wanted to, you know, play Romeo and Juliet without the tragedy at the end and bring together these teams. Unfortunately, that, you know, request and suggestion was sort of, you know, we had a brief conversation and then there was no follow-up, and we weren't able to do it. That being said, you know, tonight, I would like to say again that Uma Flowers would be happy to work with Bostica, to have a wholesale agreement with them, to buy their cannabis, to put their brand on our shelves, to dedicate a certain amount of our shelf space, we come to an agreement on that, just like, you know, one of the options that we offered before, because we'd like to bring them together, and we'd like to open up Uma in Saugus after all this time that we've, you know, been pursuing this. I take Mr. Cogliano and members of the Board at their word that the goal here was to bring revenue to Saugus, and certainly Sanctuary is, you know, an established group in Massachusetts with at least three retailers open already, and so our goal is to bring, you know, revenue to Saugus, and we have that experience. We have two open, and we'd like to do this third, we're a fully compliant group founded by two wonderful women who, you know, have great experience in the industry and medical professionals with their husbands who are doctors are also onboard, so we'd like to make that opportunity. So now, now that Bostica's horse, the horse of Bostica is sort of out of the race, and So now, now that Bostica's horse, the horse of Bostica is sort of out of the race and the goal was to bring cannabis, bring revenue and cannabis to the city, to the town of Saugus, this is an opportunity to sort of let bygones be bygones, realize that we had already once tried to do this sort of Romeo and Juliet. We will offer shelf space and enter into a wholesale agreement with them to make this work so that Bostica still has an opportunity to bring their cannabis specifically to Saugus and allow them to really have this local connection tie and ask that all four members of the board vote in favor of our application as is needed. We're a great group with proven track record and a great location. So with that, you know, I had a bunch more pages of stuff prepared, but I won't belabor the, the intricacies of our application. I think we all know what issues are in front of us and I just really hope that the members of the board can do what they promised the Saugus voters that they would do is really look for the revenue in town. And now that one option for that revenue is no longer on the table, hopefully they will be able to embrace us as a, as a proven retailer with a great location, who really is eager and willing to work closely with Bostica to bring revenue back to them as well so that their group also can participate in Saugus. With that, thank you very much. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do board members have questions this evening? Do you have any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application?
Are you aware the distance between that gentleman's location and Peeby D's cannabis zoning?
Yes, I am. Are you asking me a question?
Yeah, what, what's the distance?
Well, somebody said earlier 0.8, but it's not open. I, I.
All right. It's, it's going to be open because there's a place there called Phytopia. I was part of it. And the zoning is going further north all the way up to the, up to the, I believe, the Golden Banana. So why is that different than our location?
Isn't.
Can someone answer me that?
Are you talking about on the one issue?
I've got two issues. That's the first one. You know, we were told we're too close to Melrose. And nothing against this great family, but we're talking about the location. Where's the concern that it's close to Peeby?
That wasn't a concern of mine.
This is the board, not just you, ma'am, the board. Mr. Sereno made a concern.
Oh, well, wait. You, you really shouldn't be pointing out people either. All of your comments should be coming through me.
Okay, so then addressing Mr. Sereno because he stated that we were too close to Malden. Why isn't it his concern for this location?
How do you know if it's his concern or not? He hasn't said anything yet.
Why hasn't?
Because we haven't discussed it yet. We have, we have an open meeting, we're going to take a vote.
Secondly, the road, the lane, first travel lane, blind spot coming up to that location and down. You can't see all the way up there. Any concern about that?
What I can tell you is that Uma Flowers received a perfect score by the people that were on the committee. All I care about is the location. That is what the Selectmen are responsible for. And it received a very good score.
So not about the safety of the people traveling on the roadway? Because it was brought by someone on the board that he almost got rear-ended in front of our site. That, that was magnified.
I know you're disappointed.
No, it's not disappointment, it's about fear, facts. You're talking to an expert here. Not someone that says they pulled into a driveway and almost got rear-ended. I'm an expert at it.
Okay.
So, but you're still, you're just going to blow it off like no big, big deal.
I don't think we're blowing anything off. We've done our due diligence. We've done what we need to do.
You should not take me standing up there, anything personal against me. I'm here because I call balls and strikes. The, this little team that I'm with put a great presentation on. You highlighted the negative things about what we did, but there's no mention of Route One Walnut Street or Route One coming up to where Uma Flowers is. None at all. I, I think I could put two and two together here.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed? With that said, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion if we close the public hearing.
And that's seconded by the Chair.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve Uma Flowers, 24 Broadway. And just to say a few words on the, the applicant, he, you know, they do have experience in the cultivation and retail business. What, what I also looked at is why I approved the two across the street, I approved Sanctuary. Why I approved Sanctuary plus Uma Flowers. It's closest to the Linfield line. And as of today, according to the Department of Revenue website, Peeby, Danvers, Middleton, Wakefield, Linfield, all do not sell marijuana. So I think them two businesses could capture some of their, some of their clients from those communities. And Saugus, for Saugus residents, you could leave Essex Street, Main Street, Walnut Street and head right up there and then turn around at the bridge. I think it's, I think both of them locations are a good location. And with Uma Flowers, I know they received a plan to build a 5,000 square foot business. Although the property's own commercial, it's been taxed for many years as residential. And when you, when you tax property, the board assesses a tax, taxes property, it's, it's based on the use, not the zoning. So we've been only getting a residential tax rate out of that, out of that lot. And it'd be, it'd be great to bring that, that lot back into the commercial tax base in town. The commercial tax, the residential tax rate's $11.34. The commercial tax rate is $23.34. Currently, the land's assessed at $270,000 because they did knock the building down. So we're bringing in, based on that value, under the residential property, we're bringing in about $3,000 a year. If it was a commercial, commercially taxed, we'd bring in $6,000 a year. So I, I looked at, you know, a new building and plus the land, we, we could bring it in with a commercial tax rate, we could be probably bringing in a million dollars. I think it's a great opportunity for the town, like I said, to get, to get that back on the commercial tax rate zone. So, you know, you're going to get new, significant building, permit building fees for a new building and along with the new growth in the town's tax base. So that's why I support Uma Flowers.
Okay. And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Selectman Riley?
That's okay. I just want to say that I was originally in favor of marijuana dispensaries to bring in additional revenue to our town. So as Selectman Sereno, even though the numbers were low, I do believe that even $300,000 a year of additional revenue could hire a couple of teachers or buy a couple of cruisers. So any amount is better than nothing. So I just wanted to clarify that. And again, any amount of revenue, additional revenue not going to the taxpayers is a help to our town. Thank you, Ms. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. We'll call a vote, please, Janice?
Selectman Cogliano?
No.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Sereno?
Yes.
Chairman Panetta?
Yes. With that said, Uma Flowers is not granted a license. I do thank you very much for coming in and your interest in Saugus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to give my reasons for voting no on that. First of all, we had a place that was vertically integrated. We voted no on that, on, for that applicant. This applicant is not vertically integrated and I don't believe it's in the top three locations for this. We had much better locations, so that's the reason I voted no. And I did bring this here to generate revenue for the town, but I'm not, I'm not going to be boxed in on a vote. So that's my reason.
With that said, that this is the end of our hearings tonight. We have nothing else on the agenda. Would somebody please make a motion to adjourn? That's seconded by the Chair. All those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everyone, for attending.